All right, we'll call to order the City Council regular meeting agenda for Monday, March the 4th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. If you would, all stand. We will be led in invocation by Councilmember Carbone, followed by the pledges to both flags by Councilmember Chavaria. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. If y'all would bow with me. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this great city. Be with those that are all here tonight. Help us to make the wise decisions. Be with the first responders that are there at the moment's notice to keep us safe and protect us. Be with those serving in our armed forces, both here and overseas. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right. Thank you for that. Welcome to City Hall. Thank you for each and every one of you for coming out tonight. We will be proceeding through this agenda in just a, this is our opportunity for a business meeting of the, of the city, city business. So with that, we will be proceeding. Road call and certification of coram. Madam Secretary, I will certify. We have a coram present, as all members are present, with the exception of Member Patel, who will be absent from the chamber during this evening. Moving to citizen comments, we have received several comments, citizens that have presented to speak tonight. We have two members that are asking for just under general comments. We will do those now. The others who want to speak to a specific agenda item, we will call your names when we get to that item. So with that, Mayor Protem, go ahead and proceed.
Yes, Mayor. Our first speaker for this evening is Mark Chapman. If you would make your way to the podium, state your name and address. We'll give you three minutes to speak.
I believe we, you want to do the handheld?
No, I can talk.
Okay.
I just talk louder because I'm deaf.
Thank you for coming.
My name is Mark Chapman. I live at 1938 Garden Road, number 173, Pearland, Texas. I've been a resident for 30 years. When do I start?
You're going.
Okay. The reason I'm coming to kind is all around this town, this town violates ADA laws. Friday, my wife went to a restaurant that this city's inspectors authorized to open after they remodeled, and they are not handicap accessible, which is a violation of federal law. Any business that spends more than $1,000 remodeling is no longer grandfathered. I have counted eight businesses that this city has authorized to be this way. Hubcap Grill, the Chinese buffet, several others. I've got four pages that I went around writing down all the issues, like Subway from across the street from the bowling, old bowling alley. They actually redid their parking lot, removed the handicap sign, and striped or parked or removed the stripe of the ramp to get on their sidewalk. I can't go in their business. Where am I supposed to, how am I supposed to get in their business? There is no ramp for me to go, nowhere protected for me to go, or anywhere. And our city inspectors are paid to do this, just like they'd go out to these restaurants, and they have them put trash cans in the restrooms, that they put right in the handicaps area, where we have to back into our wheelchairs, our power chairs. I've been to Wendy's, Busy Bee, all of them do it all over this town, which is a violation of federal law. I have to have that area to transfer over. But I can't because the trash cans in the way. And the last time I moved one of those trash cans, I got an infection on my hand, and spread it to my power chair's joey stick, and spread it on my body. Because you can't wash it off. Now, I've got pictures of all these violations and everything all over town. That's all I've been doing is taking pictures. And I'm tired of it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. If you have all those pictures present?
Yes, I do. They're on my phone, but I don't know how to transfer them to y'all.
I was gonna say, our city secretaries are here that we could be able to take that in and respond accordingly.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Next to speak is Laura Chapman. If you would make your way to the.
Say again? Oh, okay. All right. Well, that's a.
All right. Well, with that, we'll continue with the meeting.
All right. Sounds good. Like I said, the other ones that signed up to speak will be called under the item that they identified on their sheet. With that, we'll move to public hearing number one. Martin, if you would, present the reason for the public hearing, and then move right into the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. For this first public hearing, this is a request by Celecia Grossi, applicant on behalf of Charlotte Mills owner, for approval of a conditional use permit for a beauty school within the Old Town General Business OTGB district on approximately 0.1159 acres of land. This property is generally located at 2400 South Texas Avenue here in Pearland. So as mentioned, this is a request to allow a conditional use permit to be permitted for a beauty school. The future land use for this area is within the Village District, which is generally where Old Town is located. And to date, we have not received any public comments, either in opposition or against or for this request. So to give you a general idea of where the property is, it's on the left-hand side of the road when you're coming down or coming up South Texas Avenue towards Broadway. And again, the whole area is within the Village District, which is where Old Town is. Giving you a general overview, there's a restaurant across the street, backs up to a single-family residence to the south, office to the west, and an office and beauty studio to the north. So this property was annexed into the city in 1959. It was developed with a 3,500 square foot office building in 1983, and there is currently not a plat of the property. So we'll go through a couple images of the site. And then this is the proposed floor plan. And then staff conducted analysis and took that analysis to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Staff recommended approval of the conditional use permit. And then at the Planning and Zoning Commission general, regular meeting, they held a vote and recommended approval of the CUP with no additional conditions within their recommendation. With that, Mayor, I'll pass it back to you.
All right. Thank you. Is the applicant present? Do you have a presentation or just here to answer any questions? Wonderful. Thank you. If we have any questions, we'll certainly ask you to go to the podium here in a minute. All right. Thank you for that. Then next up, we will just throw it open to the public. Those wishing to speak, did we have anybody sign up to speak on this? Okay. Wishing to speak for or against this proposed request, go to the podium, give us your name and address. Minutes to speak. Second and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request, seeing no one move in that direction, we'll open it up to questions and comments and concerns from council. Anyone have a question or comment? Ms. Cade?
I was just, can you ask her to go to the podium? Could you go to the podium? I have a question for you. Thank you.
When you do, give us your name and address for the record. Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight.
My name is Celecia Gross, and the address for the business is 2400 South Texas. You need my address or just the business?
Give us your address. That's fine.
Oh, it's 10639, El Saline, Iowa Colony. I live in Iowa Colony.
Thank you. It's a beauty school, but can people go there and get their hair done still? Like?
So we don't do hair. We don't do cosmetology. We do eyelash extensions.
I see it now.
Esthetician and nails. And people can come there and get half price.
Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Gross, I just wanted to say one, one thing that you wrote in your letter that I'm really appreciative of. You said, "This opportunity also helps the city of Pearland by not having so many vacant or abandoned older buildings that are harder to lease or sell in the area." We talk about that up here a lot. And so I just want to say, I'm appreciative of you bringing this business here and helping us to fill those spaces. So there's not going to be any, any no's from me tonight on this. But just, that's something we do talk about a lot. So I'm glad to see that we found a business that can make use of this space. And I'd have to put a lot of barriers in your way. So I'm hoping for a quick and easy yes tonight. Thanks for being here.
Great.
Any other questions, comments? All right. With that, we will end this doctored public hearing number one and move to new business item number one. If Mr. Carbone would present that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action resolution R 2024-CUP 2406. So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. We've had staff report and questions, comments from council. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Chavaria?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Tooman?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Coza?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right. Thank you for that. Welcome to the city of Pearland. Thank you. With that, we will move to public hearing number two. Martin, same drill. If you'll read into the record the reason for the public hearing and move right into staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. So public hearing number two is a request by Drake Dominey, Pelican Builders, and Andy Hall, Kimley Horn, and Associates applicant on behalf of CBL Pearland Town Center OP Prop Co. and Pearland Town Center LP owners for approval of amendments to the Pearland Town Center planned unit development on approximately 37.4604 acres of land. This is generally on the south side of 11200 Broadway Street here in Pearland. So as mentioned, this is a set of amendments to the existing Pearland Town Center PD. The future land use for this area is within the 288 Gateway. Prior to posting of the agenda for this item, we had 108 written responses that were against. And then today, we received 50 to 60 that were made a part of the report later, later in the afternoon. So the subject property is a part of the plan development. The total plan development is outlined in red, and then the actual subject property itself is outlined in yellow. And then you can see the surrounding future land uses for this area. Generally, a lot of it is within the 288 Gateway along the northeast and a portion of the south. And you've got medium density residential, and then the school property to the west. So specifically looking at, at the actual site and development that surrounds it, you can see that it has apartments in the hotel across the Ring Road. There is property that's undeveloped, but working on being developed to the east. Floor and decor is to the south, along with the residential subdivision, followed by the detention, some undeveloped property and a tire shop along the west side. So the Pearland Town Center was originally established in 2005. That, that plan development had a few sub-districts or sub-areas that were made a part of it. And that helped to establish what we have today. The subject 37.46 acres comprises of a few of the remaining undeveloped parcels within that plan development. That area is largely known as SubArea C within the Town Center PD, and was exclusively reserved to accommodate the development of a large multipurpose event and performing arts center, or privately owned large format retail theater, or some other entertainment use. But as you can see, that use has not come to fruition yet. Here on the maps on the screen, you can see the variety of sub-areas that were originally called out. Then you can see how those sub-areas have changed a little bit over time. So in 2011, City Council denied a request for a PD amendment, which would have allowed for 142 single-family detached residential lots. And then moving to this project, at the July 10th PD workshop, applicant proposed a single-family rental development, which consisted of 124 dwelling units. And at that point, they received feedback from council and the Planning and Zoning Commission. And taking all of that feedback, they came back for another workshop on November 3rd, where they presented the previous single-family rental development and a multifamily option for the site. And again, received some feedback on that, which generally led to them proposing the multifamily option. We wanted to provide a few shots of the property. And since it is such a large parcel of land, we had to kind of divide it into multiple sections. So this is straight down the middle, and then this is off to the right-hand side. And then here is the proposed design plan for the property. And then here is their proposed landscape design. One of the key features that we had discussed at the workshop was the infill of landscaping along the walking trail that has previously existed for the Pearland Town Center as an amenity for both the hotel and the existing apartments on site. And this project, should it be approved, will have a requirement to infill, infill that walking trail with all of the trees shown on the site plan. Here are some amenities that are proposed for their development. And then this is a general design layout that they are proposing, which complements what is existing out at the Pearland Town Center. The primary deviation, of course, is the amenitized open area or open space that is called out. They are looking to fill that within SubArea F, which is the detention area that has the walking trail. So staff found that these proposed amendments met the criteria for plan developments. And then we recommended approval of the amendment to the Pearland Town Center. Following all of that, we had a meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission on February 19th. Some of the major topics that were discussed were the number of units, the proposed rent range, the interaction of the developer with the HOA prior to the P and Z meeting, and then the previous plans that had been proposed for SubArea C. At that February 19th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of the amendments that were proposed. And with that, Mayor, I'll pass it back to you.
All right. Thank you, Martin. Is the applicant present? Anyone who does speak, please be sure to give us your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Drake Dominey. My address is 6154 Burgoyne Road, Houston, Texas, 77057. I'm with Pelican Builders. As. As previously mentioned, we met three times over the past year in this room with council and the planning commission to discuss a residential project at Pearland Town Center. And Pelican Builders, we build luxury residential all over the city of the Houston metro infill and suburban areas. The images you see here are some examples of the projects that we've, we built around the Houston area. We are a 30-plus-year-old firm that, that developed solely here in Houston. As previously mentioned in the meetings, we proposed a single-family for rent project is, as well as a multifamily project in the direction that we received as, was that a multifamily project would be best suited for the town center environment. And we designed a plan that you previously saw for town center. The plan that we're looking at today that is for 380 units in, in town center, in addition to the existing multifamily in town center. And we have a presentation that our civil engineer, Kimley Horn, Ethan Harwell will present, as well as Matt Pino from CBL, would like to say a few words, kind of just the history of our relationship here. And I didn't mention, we were introduced to CBL at the end of 2022, and will potentially partner with them on to develop this project further, and hopefully provide additional enhancement to town center. And Matt can speak to that further.
My name's Matt Pino. I live at 3909 Spring Arbor Court, Pearland, Texas, 77584. Like Drake said, I am the general manager of the Pearland Town Center, representing CBL Properties. As everyone is kind of aware, we've been part of the community since 2008, and we've had that land zoned to be part of a theater district or a multi-function type area. And unfortunately, we've never been able to bring anything to fruition, be from the private sector. We value our commitment in the community here, and we feel like this partnership with Pelican is bringing the best product forward. They bring a premium product that is going to help us as a town center revitalize our current existing retail and dining options. Going to bring very upper feel to the center. It's going to bring the center to a new life, a new era, Anna, as it's aged to about a 15-year-old center. It's going to help us with that next phase that we go through. I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I want to thank council for taking a listen to this.
Ethan Harwell, Kimley Horn Associates, 11233 Shadow Creek Parkway, here in Pearland. As Matt and Drake have alluded to, we have a really unique piece of property here. The property itself has sat undeveloped since 2005, in the middle of a very successful retail shopping center. It's only gotten more successful as Pearland and the surrounding areas have grown. This is really not just a destination for folks within Pearland, but folks for around Pearland and our surrounding communities as well. Directly across the street from. Directly across the street from us, we have the residences of Pearland, which are, it is, excuse me, which is an existing multifamily use there. What we've really done, and what you'll see tonight in our presentation, is we've really tried to focus on matching the residents of Pearland in style, materials, form. We've brought our buildings up to the street. There's an urban design component of this. If you come in the Town Center right off Broadway, you'll notice kind of an unfinished terminus at the end of the road in front of our property. We're going to kind of complete that design. We also want to reflect positively towards the pond and utilize that valuable open space for residents in the community at large. So as Drake mentioned, in two thousand and five, this PUD was entitled for a certain amount of multifamily, three hundred units across all of those colored areas there. What you see is two hundred, on the ground today is the two hundred and thirty-four units within residences at Pearland Town Center. Those remainder units really do not by themselves create a viable project. There's no economies of scale there, really. The existing entitlements really are for an entertainment-type center, bowling alley theater, like Martin elaborated. It does permit some retail there. But as we've noted over the last twenty years, CBL has not found additional retail users for this site. And in the, especially in the retail shopping era, pre-recession, and now in the COVID era, increasingly, increasingly, you need more and more rooftops to support retail development, especially in more suburban areas. So what we're asking for today is to quite simply just permit some additional dwelling units there on SubArea C outlined in black. As Drake mentioned, we are asking for four hundred units. The plans you'll see here do ask for three eighty. That is just some wiggle room before we do final engineering and planning. Plans you see here will differ a lot than you see for multifamily projects here in Pearland, quite simply because we're not your traditional garden, your, your traditional garden-style multifamily complex. You looked at a traditional garden-style multifamily site plan, the first thing you notice is you've got eight, nine, ten, maybe even twelve different buildings that your units are distributed among. You'll notice that you'll have outdoor areas, you can see stairwells, dumpsters, that kind of a thing. Those types of complexes really lead to a lot of problems. It's hard to keep eyes on things. Your complexes are deep, physically deep, your site, and so you don't get a lot of eyes on it from the road. That's when maintenance fails, that's when problems arise, and things are deferred and properties fail. Our plan here presents three unique four-story multifamily buildings with the three hundred and eighty units spread among them. Each of these buildings is four-story tall, so it's equipped with an elevator. And all of the facilities take place inside the building. All of our units take access off interior hallways, all of our fitness centers and that sort of thing, our interior amenities. We have some outside amenities I'll touch on in a moment. And then you'll notice that we've pushed it up to the street. So you've only got two rows of parking, really that's for fire access. By the ring road, there will be eyes on the site at all times. These images were presented at our workshop last November. This is a very similar complex and a very similar setting designed by Meeks and Partners, who will be designing this facility for us as well. Here you can see the quality, look and feel. Our finishes will match the Town Center from this. You can see how it relates to the amenities. And, and you'll note that you don't see any of the service areas, stairwells, breezes, like that from the outside. We have our concerns and of course, our very conscientious of our neighbors and the single-family neighborhoods to the south. What we would point out is that with our L-shaped and U-shaped buildings, only the very ends of our buildings are close to the single-family neighborhoods. And by close, I mean over a football field away. So that pond gives us a natural buffer and barrier from there. The closest portions of our buildings are four hundred and seventy-six feet away from the nearest single-family property line. But the majority of our buildings are actually further away, about a hundred and ten feet behind that. You'll have very minimal views from these units, considering how far away they are. Those closest portions are just ends of buildings. And as this drone image illustrates, that you'll be very minimal into neighbors' backyards. Our landscape plan is really what we're most excited about this site. You know, developing the site with residential use over commercial use gives us the opportunity to really maximize that existing open space. As Martin said, we'll be amenitizing that existing area around the pond. If you go out there today, one half of that pond is, is beautiful and lovely in their shade, and the other half has no shade. You can imagine walking through that in August. What we'll be doing is planting approximately one hundred and twenty trees and adding some additional amenities like benches and other places to sit and enjoy the pond as you walk around the pond. We really view this as an amenity, yes, for our residents, existing residents and employees of the Town Center, but also for the entire community. This will be a destination within the Pearland Town Center. That program around the pond will complement our, our system of onsite amenities. We'll of course have your typical kind of playground and pool. We don't expect many residents with children. We'll primarily be a ratio of two to one, excuse me, sixty-six percent one-bedroom, thirty-five percent two-bedroom units. But this will complement our onsite programming. We do expect our site to be fenced for security. It's important to note that we also income verify and background check all of our residents, considering we do have this public interface here. This is very much so a part of our program, what we're excited to bring to Town Center. On all those improvements around the, just the improvements around the pond, we expect to be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment that wouldn't otherwise occur if we weren't able to build these units. Additionally, we expect to provide about two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars into the city's park fund to also improve nearby public parks, like Southgate Park, which is actually how you get from Southgate into the trail around the pond. We're also really focused on making the Town Center more walkable. You know, a lot of the benefit to CBL is having kind of this captive customer base and this activity. A lot of times when I work with new retailers, what they're looking for is an active, walkable Town Center environment like this, where they can get that pass-by shopper to do some window shopping in a, in a very active environment. So we'll be upgrading those crossings in accordance with the latest safety guidelines. If you go out there now, they're just kind of painted stripes on the road, but we'll be restriping, adding signage, lots of things. We also understand that traffic is a concern. So as part of the city's TIE requirement, we will be studying four specific intersections around the Town Center to help understand how we can help keep traffic moving. That analysis will identify improvements that we have to make in order to keep traffic circulating. That is all I have for you, but the three of us are here to take questions, as well as our civil engineer, Andy Hope.
All right. Thank you for that. We, if we have some questions, we will get to that once we get to the question and answer portion of it. Thank you for your presentation. We will now move. Again, I believe we received, what, eight or ten people to speak? So we're going to call them individually, one by one. Please go to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. We're just going to earmark two minutes each. That way, over, I think there's ten, that's twenty minutes worth of testimony to receive into the record. And once we get through with that, we'll go into question and answers. And one of the things that we'll do is we'll try to get the questions that the residents are raising answered, either by the developer or by staff, as we move forward, before we really turn it over to council for comments and concerns. With that, Mayor Protim.
Yes, Mayor. First up will be Melissa Flores, if you'd make your way to the podium. You'll have two minutes to speak, state your name and address, and thank you for coming out this evening.
Thank you. My name is Melissa Flores. My address is three four zero seven Cleberg Court. I have been a resident of Pear, of Southgate for sixteen years. Our little neighborhood is surrounded by businesses, two schools, many, many, many strip centers, the Waffle House, the Autozone, the Jiffy Lube, the public storage, Costco, floor and decor, and of course, the Town Center. The good thing about businesses is they go home at night. An apartment complex is twenty-four seven. The Servell, which is the builder of our Southgate homes, built homes with the bedrooms in the back, meaning that those homes on Harris Avenue will have lights in their backyard, in their bedrooms, every night, all night. According to an article in the Reporter News, this development has been talked about in the Planning and Zoning Meeting since November. A few homes on Harris were informed three days before the final Planning and Zoning Meeting to approve this complex. The rest of our community found out from the, about this from Facebook, which means we had very little time to make any impact on planning and zoning. In the article, the mayor was quoted as saying, "We need to defer to our neighbors." That never happened. Southgate residents are the neighbors that you would be talking about. The same article states that there was another project planned of townhomes, but someone opposed. Who? It was not us, since we were never informed about that project. We do not want this complex. We do not need this complex, and this is truly not fair, how our neighborhood has been treated. We are not trying to keep Pearland from being developed, since it is clear that we are surrounded by businesses. We would gladly accept another business, which is supposed to be zoned for entertainment, over this four-story monstrosity. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Next up will be Susan Ballard, if you'd make your way to the podium. State your name and address, and we'll give you two minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Susan Ballard. I'm at eleven four one three Grimes Avenue. I have lived in Southgate since two thousand and twelve, so not as long as some. Have watched the growth exponentially and additionally have watched the traffic exponentially. My concern with this project is adding four hundred plus or minus units. In addition, the proposed parking is six hundred, which that math doesn't add up to me. Even if you have a one-bedroom, you've got two people in there, two cars. Anyway, it's going to add a lot to the traffic. What is the city going to do in regards to alleviating that? We don't really have the roadways around us to be able to handle the traffic. Additionally, EMS and fire response. Yes, we have a fire station right across from our neighborhood, but adding more people in addition to the two hotels that I understand are proposed is going to add a lot more people to that EMS response time, the firefighters, what have you. If we've only got, you know, I think maybe two engines there and one ambulance, I don't know that exactly. But if the call volume is up and they're already out, then they can't respond to, you know, in a timely manner. So that is a huge concern. When I first moved to Pearland in two thousand and one, the argument was that we wanted to keep majority of the living in Pearland a single-home ownership. Why? It keeps the crime down, and it keeps the demographics up, and it keeps the values of our homes up. Lately, it seems like we're adding more and more and more apartment complexes. Our crime has gone up. What is the city going to do in regards to adding more police to this area if we've got more people, especially with the two hotels that are going in and a four-hundred-unit-plus complex? So again, that's why I propose, I mean, I oppose this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard.
Thank you for coming out. Next up is Manish Patel. If you could make it to your way to the podium, state your name and address, and we'll give you two minutes to speak. Thanks for coming out this evening.
My name is Manish Kumar Patel. I live in Southgate, one one four zero five Terra Place. And I'm here for for the apartments against the apartment. They bring something else, it's good. Because people in apartment, they live over there, and they're twenty-four seven. Same, she asked about that one. I'm opposed about that one. We like to live in a single, a single, like, house. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Next up will be Valerie Hobson, if you'd make your way to the podium. State your name and address, and we'll give you two minutes to speak this evening. Thank you.
My name is Valerie Hobson, and I live at one one five one six Raceway, Pearland, Texas. And I too oppose the apartments that Pelican wants to put up. I did come out to the Planning and Zoning Meeting where it got approved. And however, when we all bought our home, I've been living in the community for seventeen years. When we all bought our community, we bought in our community, we didn't have all the businesses. I'm for developing Pearland, however, right now, I have the lights flashing in my bedroom from the rezoning of the property on Magnolia and Kirby. We have the widening of Kirby, so we don't have a sound wall. We, it's like our community just, planning and zoning just approves, approves, and council approves, but no one thought about us. When we moved to Pearland, it was because we didn't want a huge congested area where we live. And now we have so much traffic. And I understand from going to the Planning and Zoning Meeting a few weeks ago that a survey went out and the residents of Pearland stated that they wanted more multifamily residence. Well, when I looked at where they sent that out, it was three hundred and sixty-one residents that they sent it to, and I got feedback, I believe it was like fifty-eight. And there's way more people in the city of Pearland. And I oppose the apartment building. I think it should not be rezoned. Mayor, when you did the talk of the town, you stated that we were trying to bring in more entertainment. This contradicts that by putting, rezoning entertainment area to a multifamily residential area. So to me, that's going against what we're trying to do when it comes to bringing the entertainment to the city of Pearland. And I think those apartments look just like all the other ones, and we have a whole bunch all down Business Center. And those look better than what we just saw in this slide deck. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hobson.
All right. Next up is Yolanda Ames, if you'd make your way to the podium, state your name and address, and we'll give you two minutes to speak this evening. Thanks for coming out.
Good evening. My name is Yolanda Ames. Address is one one five oh five Raceway. And I just want to echo what has already been said, and that you'll probably continue to hear. So I stand supporting our Southgate community, but not just Southgate, but Pearland, the, the residents of Pearland. There, I have friends and family that live in the area. Of course, they were not aware, and I understand the rule is if you're within two hundred feet, I guess, from the subject property, you're not, you won't receive a notification. So I feel like I'm coming on behalf of the city as well, that they're just not in attendance for multiple reasons. I'll point out a couple of things, again, things that have already come up. One thing is our schools. They are already overpopulated. I've been a homeowner for the past seventeen years, and we've been rezoned, rezoned, and rezoned. And as they continue to build these apartments, the same thing happens. You know, I know we're still building more schools, but at some point, we're just at our limits. And I feel like with apartments, it's more difficult to regulate how many students are coming in and out, address verifications and things of that nature. I'll point out a couple of things. I know my time is running. Home values. I'm a real estate agent, and I work in the Pearland area, as well as Interloop. Very familiar with Pelican Builders. Lovely product in some of the upper echelon areas. But what I've seen is not reflective of what, what I know that they build, that they're proposing here in Pearland. And even families and professionals, they bypass our city because they're not very, they don't love what we're seeing in the Town Center today. And I don't think apartments are going to help with the facelift of our community. And then as we've learned about hotels coming into that undeveloped space that was mentioned behind floor decor, again, it's just going to add to traffic, which we're already strongly impacted by on Magnolia Parkway, including accidents that have taken place. So I know my time is up, I have more, but I too oppose the zoning.
Thank you for saying.
Thank you very much. Next up is Bernadette Finney. If you'd make your way to the podium, state your name and address, and we'll give you two minutes to speak. Thank you very much for coming out. We'll be patiently waiting.
My name's Bernadette Finney. Address is one one two one five Harris Avenue, which I haven't heard anybody from Harris Avenue yet, which means we currently will be exactly behind the apartments that they're about to build, which we're opposed to. Yes, we will be separated by a retention pond, but currently I can stand outside my patio and see the apartments that are already there. A four-story apartment building will be seen by anybody on Harris Avenue. Um, a four-story apartment building will be seen by anybody on Harris Avenue. I don't care about the retention pond, you will see it. Um, there's so much traffic in Pearland currently. Um, are we doing a traffic study for this project? It's also been said that everybody had just found out about this, which we did. We got a letter in the mail. This sounds like it's been in the works since twenty-twenty-three. We've lived there uh since twenty-fifteen, and this is the first I'm hearing of this. Uh, we've been given no time to prepare as a community, Southgate. I mean, I, I would've been a lot more involved with this. We just found out with a letter in the mail. And then, we had a Teams meeting, I believe, I think it was February twenty-eighth, uh, which I was on, where we did have a chance to ask questions. Originally, when we got this mail out, it made it look like it was gonna be built on the opposite side of the retention pond, so I'm at least happy it's not right behind my gate. Um, we, I totally oppose it. It's, it's the traffic, the crime. I've been in Pearland for over about twenty-five years, different parts of Pearland, and we purchased this house in two, two thousand and fifteen with the intent of having a backyard, having nobody ever behind us. Um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Sherry Harmon. If you'd make your way to the podium, state your name and address, and we'll give you two minutes to speak. Thank you very much for coming out.
Hello, my name is Cherie Harmon, and I stay at thirty-five-twelve Madison Drive, and I've been in the neighborhood since two thousand and five. And I just want to say that sta- statistically speaking, when um crime, the crime rates will rise when apartment buildings are built. Property values decrease historically, and the change in the socioeconomic conditions typically change once the apartments are constructed. We're already congested on Magnolia uh in that area, as everyone has uh said, and I do agree with, and I'm totally against the apartment buildings being built. It's just gonna add more and more congestion to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out. All right, our next uh speaker is Alicia Brantley. If you'd make your way to the podium, state your name and address. Thank you for coming out this evening.
Hi, my name is Alicia Brantley on eleven-two-eleven Grimes Avenue. Yeah, I totally oppose, I agree with everyone there for speaking so far. I want to thank my uh Southgate community. We definitely oppose this because I feel the same way, there's gonna be more crime. Also, I've been here since, in my subdivision, since two thousand and fourteen. If I had known that there was gonna be some apartments, I probably would've maybe not even moved in that subdivision. I mean, you have so many apartments in Pearland. You got uh Shadow Creek Parkway, you got the uh, that Discovery, I think that Discovery Street, and there is so much traffic right now. You got Magnolia at the front, you got the Kirby on the side, you got the school, you know, Shadow Creek, you know, when school is out, it's a lot of traffic, and then, like the old Business Center, it's so much traffic. So it's gonna be worse, so it's gonna be worse once this uh apartment uh complex comes. I guess my uh concern is really with the crime and the value of the homes, you know? The value of the home, you know, is pretty good, you know, our homes sell pretty fast in our subdivision, but I feel like once the apartment complex comes, it's gonna stop uh the, the value of the home is not gonna sell as fast, because most people, when they look at homes, they want homes around them. They don't want these apartments around them. And so I totally oppose with the apartment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is uh Susan Hilson. Uh, if you make your way to the podium, state your name and address, and we'll give you two minutes to speak. Thank you very much for coming out.
We do apologize if we uh don't quite get your names right, so uh, just looking at the name.
It helps if you can read my writing.
Uh, I was a little handicapped, but we'll, we'll get there.
I'm Susan Wilson. I live at thirty-four oh two, thirty-four oh six Medina Court in Pearland. I've lived in Southgate since um for sixteen years, and I've lived in Pearland for forty-nine. When we moved here, it was a nice rural community. You could see lots of open fields, and I realize that that's not great for business because we don't have farming anymore. What I worry about is how much flooding we have, and I know that that hasn't been mentioned. I know the traffic is ridiculously difficult to get through. If you have anywhere you need to be as a nurse, I never walked to one single place I worked. That was one of the things that was mentioned last week when they had the meeting. I've always worked in the medical center most of the time. Everything is dry, and two-eight-eight has turned into a parking lot, so there is no easy way to deal with traffic, but that's something that's gonna severely impact us in Southgate. The drainage has been an issue. When I lived in Corrigan South, we always had flooding. And that didn't have to be, but it started after we started building up around us. This is going to be an additional problem I'm concerned about. While we've got great little retention ponds there at the mall, as well as behind our homes, those ponds are, are brimming full when we have a big event. I don't wanna see it made worse by more building and stress on the infrastructure that has not yet been built to capacity. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you very much. And our final speaker this evening is Bency John. If you'd make your way to the podium, state your name and address. Uh, we, we can get to you once we get it finished right here, we'll be more than happy to. Yes, sir. All right, so uh, Bency John?
Well, Bency, she in the lobby? Okay.
All right, we'll move on to this gentleman right here.
Yeah, under, under the, so that'll be our last one that signed up to speak, so I'll uh give it open to the floor, uh, go to the name, uh, go to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. Uh, thank you for being here, we'll give you the same two minutes.
And if you make sure and fill out one of the cards and turn it into our city secretary.
My name is Chris Dieter. I live at one-one-two-one-eight Armstrong Lane. I've lived in Pearland here since two thousand and four. What I've noticed is that there's been a lot of development as far as apartments. Currently, we probably have about five developments of apartments complexes. Um, I also hear on a pretty regular basis is sirens, also the apps chime saying, "Did you hear the gunshot? Did you hear the sirens?" And it's always alarming for people to get those on their phones, to be able to say, "Is it safe in our area?" Currently, our subdivision uh is very concerned about crime. Um, we've actually had to implement uh security cameras, because we're concerned about our subdivision. Apartment complexes fortunately look good when they go up, but then they decline. I've lived in apartment complexes for uh seven years. During that time, there's been management changed over twice. Um, the building deteriorates, nothing gets done as far as uh fixing up the buildings. Um, and that would be a very big eyesore, especially to uh the mall when this occurs over some odd years. Um, currently, there's a lot of people that do walk the pathway around the, the pond, families. If the apartment complex goes in, uh, there will be extra um problems with crime in that area, and people will not feel safe walking any more, any longer in that area. You wanna make this a uh walking facility around the uh mall, this would not be the answer to it. Um, my concern is, is basically crime. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out. Thank you, Mr. Dieter. All right, uh, and I'll just do one last call for those wishing to speak on this uh proposed request. Same thing, uh, Mr. Lewis, if you will uh fill out one of the speakers' forms when we're done.
Okay. You bet. My name is Bob Lewis. I'm obviously a military man, and I've been in the city since nineteen eighty-eight.
Give us your address, Mr. Lewis.
Oh, address, two-two-three-six North Galveston Avenue, Pearland, Texas, seven-seven-five-eight-one. I don't know how many of these people that have spoken realize that in the city of Pearland right now, we have fourteen hundred schoolteachers, a hundred and seventy-nine policemen, a hundred firefighters, a hundred and forty-five World War II veterans, twelve hundred and two Korean veterans, fifteen hundred and eight Vietnam veterans. Our ETJ is only seventy-five square miles. The city has used up fifty square miles of it. The median price of a home in January of this year in the city was three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. That's thirty-nine hundred dollars a month. These homes these gentlemen are talking about were rent for somewhere around half of that. And I just wish they would at least consider that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for that. Mr. Lewis, again, if you'll fill out one of the speakers' forms, just so we can tie your name and address back to your comment.
Outside and get it, or what?
I, uh, there should be one out there, we can get it uh for the city secretary's office. I appreciate it. All right, uh, with that, we will move on, uh, what? Oh, we will move forward in our uh public hearing.
Mayor Cole, there was one gentleman that had raised his hand earlier.
Oh, okay. Didn't see it. This will be our last uh speaker from the floor. I didn't see you raise your hand, sorry about that.
It's okay. My name is Aaron Davis, one-one-two-zero-nine Briscoe Lane. I'd just like to ask a couple of questions. The first question being, where are all the supporters who want to build for Pelican? I don't see any of them here. So they're the only ones who are supporting it. We're clearly against it because it will definitely increase the crime. That's my concern, because I have children. My second question is, what about the Pelican builders' reputation? Doesn't seem to be too high online. So if, if anybody can correct me on that, I'm willing to take that and be corrected, but I haven't seen anything that makes me feel very good about them. And the third thing is, I wonder if some of them are even contributing to maybe what's going on in city council, because it seems like a lot of what happened was without our knowledge. And I don't appreciate that, because we need to be informed of what's going on, because this is gonna affect our children. So I'm very concerned about the crime. Uh, anyway, like I say, their supporters are not here. The only people who are here for Pelican are people who work for Pelican, not the people in the community. So I, I, from what I understand, even the survey that went out wasn't even very specific, it was very vague. That's why y'all got any positive response. So I would appreciate in the future that we'd be more informed about that, and I don't see any reason why they can't build uh somewhere else anyway. They can build down the two-eight-eight where there's less congestion in the first place. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Davis. We will move forward in our uh public hearing. Uh, we do want to kinda go through the list of questions that we heard. That way, we give the uh opportunity for either uh Pelican themselves or our staff, depending on the type of question, to be able to address it. May not be a full answer tonight, uh, but we at least want to uh, to address those. Um, I guess the, the, one of the first uh questions I had was, there was some concern about lighting, lighting from uh the, the four-story building, and seeing that from the back of the, of the neighborhood. Uh, question I had was on your lighting plan, uh, and Martin and, and staff, that is, you know, something that we can do as a condition of, of a building, is the type of lighting, uh, the, the, the amount of power that the light's putting off, uh, and those types of things, but uh, could you describe your lighting plan on the back of these buildings?
Yes, sir. So at this time, uh, we don't have any specific lighting fixtures or anything to show you, but that is something we're very conscious of. City has specific requirements that will be required to, to show Martin and his team whenever we're ready to develop, uh, that show uh how our cone of light doesn't cross property lines a- and that we aren't creating any glare. Uh, we'd be happy to consider additional standards. The dark sky standard uh is, is pretty uniform, uh, and that uh really requires a fully shielded light fixture where no light comes out the side. But I'll, I would add, ask Martin to add if there's any other technical information.
So on that, real quick, um, go ahead, Martin, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I've, uh, staff has reviewed the dark sky ordinance pre- previously. Uh, it was one of the talking points in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen when we first touched on lighting, uh, so if the applicant's willing to meet the dark sky standards, staff is in full support of that.
I think that would be the, I think that would be the initial standard, but then the second question on lighting, um, I, I believe there's a little bit of lighting around the pond and the trail today, is that correct? Those are out there? Okay. What about directly behind the homes uh there in Southgate? Are there, are there any lighting there? Okay. So my, so my question, and Matt, you may be able to answer this, what's, what's the plan for lighting around that? And I'll, and I'll tell you, I, in my neighborhood, I live and I back up to our pond, our pond is an amenity lake, and it's got uh a walk trail around it, and from time to time, people are like, "Hey, let's put some lighting around that path," and, and I'm like, "You'll encourage even more in the middle of the night," as opposed to uh what we do have, and that's very limited of people going around. Plus, the houses themselves with just lights on, landscape lighting and that type of thing, provide enough lighting for the lake. So what's the plan, Matt, for that?
Uh, so we currently have a hundred and ten lights that go around. Um, they're about four-foot-high uh dome lights. Uh, they don't bleed any light off of the path, or for cert- safety precautions, um, so that our security overnight PD working aside can see if there is people around the lake, and for those who are walking at night. Um, once Pelican makes the upgrades that they've proposed, um, those, the pond, walking trail's still gonna maintain under CBL's maintenance plan, um, so it's still gonna be an open public amenity that CBL makes sure and maintains, such as the lighting. Um, I know we occasionally have lights go down, they get knocked over, uh, we still will maintain those and make sure that they're functioning, getting repaired in a very timely manner.
Uh, I'm just gonna go through the list of these that I heard, and if I miss something, uh, you guys, please, please help out. Uh, parking, um, I guess Martin first, what are the parking standards? And, and it's usually by uh type of use, so what's the parking standard here? How do they meet or exceed or not get to it, and then we'll talk about the parking plan with them.
Correct, Mayor. So uh, parking is based off of a sliding scale, uh, so like a one unit is gonna have one-point-five uh spaces per unit. Um, a two-bedroom is a typical two uh, two-space allotment, uh, with their sixty-forty uh or, I think it was sixty-forty uh split, uh, their site plan showed that they met uh that minimum requirement, uh, and I'm sure Ethan can uh provide or point to uh firmer details on it.
Yes, sir. Anything to add?
Uh, yes, sir. So uh, we do propose one and two-bedroom units. We only expect that what Pelican generally sees in their product is that half of those one-bedrooms are leased by singles, and half are leased by couples, uh, roughly, that varies from project to project. So that one and a half space per unit, it's there. Uh, additionally, we're only required about five hundred and fifty parking spaces per code just for residents. We're proposing uh six hundred and thirty on site, so we have an excess there of roughly eighty. We've studied uh the entire town center, uh, at the pleasure of counting each and every parking space, uh, and the, the town center itself, just the main part managed by CBL, is about, over about eight hundred from code. Uh, we, we know that doesn't reflect the situation, you see on the ground every day, uh, but as far as code goes, we're, we're very sufficient.
Uh, next up, I heard lots about fire response and policing and those types of things. We'll go to fire response first, uh, currently. Uh, chief, you know, we, we, we add four hundred units or three hundred and eighty, whatever that number comes into. What and how does that change fire response uh for you guys? And EMS response?
Sure. Uh, adding, anytime you add citizens or, you know, population, we, there is a possibility to us to have increased responses, uh, and we're seeing an increase now currently, uh, without adding population. So when you, when you talk about adding population, uh, there will be a need to add staffing, uh, possible add another engine on that side of town, uh, at, as long as it goes with our ra- our staffing ratio, that one-point-one to one-point-two. So um, that's something to consider, but um, adding these right here, I think we're staying, we'll stand ready to respond, and, and we'll be able to take on the day.
Okay. Same thing from policing, um, obviously, adding more people, adding more density sometimes adds, uh, adds to it, but uh, how, what, and where do, uh, do we stand ready for a policing response in crime? Do we, and I guess the other question to that, to back it up, and I don't know if we'll have this for tonight, but even in the, uh, the apartments in the immediate area, uh, be it in Shadow Creek, uh, uh, or anywhere else, do we see a lot of responses and calls into those areas?
Uh, Mayor, we don't actually have uh stats right now for the apartment complex, but I can tell you as far as the city for last year, twenty-twenty-three- tell you as far as the city for last year, twenty twenty-three stats, violent crime was down nine percent, property crime was down two percent, and there was actually an overall decrease of three percent in crime for the city last year. That particular area where the development's at is part of our EDAG Zone One. So there are additional resources out there throughout the day, seven days a week.
Thank you for that. Flooding, that was a, a theme that I think we heard at the PNZ, but I think we, it was brought up tonight. I'll ask Raj our standard, and I know there's a detention pond there now and, and how it was sized and, and put into place, but can you respond to what they will need to do to meet the standards?
Yes, Mayor. This area was a part of original design, so that original design assumes the in-burbish cover for this area. And that detention pond that we see has existing capacity there. And the detention pond was designed based on zero point seven-six acre feet per acre, which is more than our minimum standard, zero point six-five acre feet per acre. And we have told design engineer that it's still, you need to verify because that detention pond was done a long time ago. If the volume is there or not, based on, just do some survey and verify that detention pond, it still has that capacity as it was designed that time in two thousand and six.
So they'll need to do kind of an as-built survey as it sits right now to make sure that the capacity is still there?
Yes. What we told them is like, you have to do as-built survey, not hundred percent of survey, but last, go to the top of the, normal pull label, get the top of the detention pond and come up with the volume and verify that the volume is still there.
And you got anything to add to that, Ethan?
No, sir. Our civil teams, Andy Hall's here, he can answer more questions. We're in the process of doing that survey now and will, of course, make any upgrades required there. I'll also add that we're using updated rainfall data for these calculations. You know, average annual rainfall has increased since the pond was designed. We'll also make sure it's sufficient for that.
All right. And then the, my, my last one, and I'll turn it over, is, is on the traffic impact analysis that was brought up by several people. It was actually in your presentation. You might want to go to that presentation piece. Explain, Raj, I'll, I'll come to you first and then to the developers, but can you explain the TIA process and what may or may not happen, you know, as, as it's determined by the impact analysis?
Okay. I, I can take that. So as a couple of residents mentioned, there are like other two development that's happening at that corner, two hotel and residence in Pearland. Both of them went through the first part of traffic impact assessment, but we haven't approved that. They're still updating their TIA. And they, what, also, we met with Pelican developers, engineer Kings, Kim Lee-Hon's engineer and traffic engineers, sat with them, provided them with the information that they need and scoped the project so that there is no impact, it's hard to say no impact, but that the design meets city of Pearland, EDCM criteria. So one of the things that's going to happen is it, it has, this area has signal on the west side on Kirby Road, but we don't have signal on the Business Center Drive. So it will probably trigger signal. And for that region, somebody needs to take the cost to install the signal. Since there are three more projects within that corridor, there will be some contribution from other developers too. So what we talked is, okay, and there are three different traffic engineers working on three different projects. We will share the data and analyze among and between them so that they can, can come unconscious about the cost share, what will be the cost share. And our, what we're assuming is like, no matter what, since the Pelican is the biggest developer there, they will, are going to install signal and there will be cost share for the signal at Business Center Drive side of this access. How that is done, the kind of agreement between among the developers and city, we haven't analyzed that yet, how that is going to be achieved. But two parts, one is interim mitigation, because there will not be signal for interim. And those two other developers, true hotel and Regency Park, is at the stage of hundred percent design. So that they're stuck with the traffic impact analysis. If once that's finalized and approved, they can go in and start the construction. So during that phase, we still need to mitigate the traffic at that intersection. So how that is going to mitigate during the interim basis? Plus, when Pelican comes, we will have to have this traffic signal. Those are the, signal is required no matter what. And apart from signal, what additional mitigation needs to be done at those both intersections needs to be analyzed, including the driveway in between. So those things we don't know yet because it's still a discussion phase. I don't think like the Kim Lee-Hon has received, go ahead to start the data collection and all those things. Those are things that we've discussed and that's, that's where we stand today.
Ethan, you got anything to add to that?
Sir, I would add, you know, total art uses projected to only generate roughly seventeen hundred trips. That's about half of what we would expect for a single-family subdivision of the same size. Three hundred and eighty single-family subdivision would be roughly thirty-eight hundred units, which when you distribute that to Kirby, Broadway, Business Center, you are, you're tens of a percent onto the total trips that those roadways carry. Those roadways are rated to carry, you know, twenty, thirty thousand, forty trips a day, depending on which roadway you're discussing. Additionally, I would add that while not every trip would be walkable here in the Pearland Town Center, you will of course have to get in your car at some point, go to work, grocery store, et cetera. What we're doing here in Pearland is creating an opportunity to prevent another car on the road, you know. By allowing residences here, what we would be doing is creating the opportunity for someone to walk to dinner, walk to the shop, walk, grab a cup of coffee. Otherwise, if there was, this was a traditional single-family neighborhood, a traditional or in-style complex, you would absolutely have another car on the road in Pearland to make those trips happen. Here, it's a possibility you could walk.
So Ethan, real quick, and I don't know if you have this off the top of your head or can, can, can give it, but you've got roughly, what, twelve acres back here? What is the total? If you had somewhere between a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand square feet of retail or event space or a combination of the two, what type of trip generation would that cause on a daily basis?
Generally, you're looking at one trip or several hundred square feet of retail. And so certainly more.
I know there's a multiplier. Raj, do you know what that is?
I need to.
I know it goes to the use.
Yeah, I need to pull up criteria. I can pull up right now. And plus, what I want to add is, we don't want to consider this only Pelican developer as a, as a development that triggers signal, because right now CBL has been using that and that's already kind of triggered signal without any development. So we add probably ten of business that creates like hundred vehicles per day, that will probably already trigger the signal. So I think like it's part of CBL too. I want to make sure that, that is considered and Pelican be responsible for a majority of that signal. That's mine, just.
Okay. And then the last question, Trent, you may be able to answer this. It's the two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in parkland dedication fees. What can and how can that be used in this given area?
So I believe the way our parkland edification fees now, work now is that we can use those in any location for any kind of park enhancements or any, anything like that. I, I did want to add, Mayor.
There was a reference to the South Gate Park.
Sure. So yeah, they could actually be, things can be used in any public park. I did want to add, you know, that, that we've talked about a lot of the, what are, would be considered, I guess, impacts on services we provide. You know, our, our remaining land within the city will eventually develop. And, you know, based on the, the current zoning and the future land use plan, all of the city's long-term planning efforts and long-term master planning does account for serving those areas. So, you know, the fact that just because this is developing or that, that this is being considered now, you know, this will develop at some point and we can accommodate whatever that development is from a water, wastewater standpoint, the roads, fire and PD. So that, that is built into our long-term planning, that this and other land that hasn't developed will develop one day. So while there are impacts of any individual project, we, we do plan for those as, as the city continues to develop.
I'll turn it over to council. I missed any?
Mayor, I have that answer for multiplying factor for high-rise building is four point five four. So four point five four times four hundred is about eighteen hundred some daily vehicles.
Ms. Chavaria?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So staff, can you please explain to me the notification process, how the property owners are notified and was HOA notified as well? Thank you.
Thank you for that question, member Chavaria. So with that, I think the best way for me to explain it is just to walk through the, the city council packet. So what I'm doing is all live right now. But on the, on the packet itself, there are links to both the notification map and the list of people who were notified. So I'll start off with this map. This map shows the buffer that is required for notification for us to send out mail to property owners. So everyone within two hundred feet of the property receive notification and that is shown within this shaded outline. As the property is a planned development, we send to everyone within that planned development and we utilize the whole boundary of the property to perform that two-hundred-foot radius. Since South Gate Homeowners Association is a property owner within the two-hundred-foot limit, as they have this detention property, they were listed here on the notification list. And we send, we use tax records to perform notification. So whatever address or entity handles or deals with Brejoria County, that's where we that's where we gather information from.
And maybe just to have the Pelican folks weigh in, I believe they've had some contacts with the HOA as well, so maybe what that looked like.
Thank you. Once we, once we had a, a plan for the, for the project, we did reach out to the HOA board, which was on, we had a, we had a, we had a video call with the board and also provided a presentation with the site plan and the drone. That was on January fifteenth. So that was over a month prior to the PNZ meeting a couple of weeks ago. And then we had a meeting last week with, that was open to the entire neighborhood and we answered questions and went through the presentation again.
Yes, Mayor. Martin Vance, could you explain the process as far as workshop needs a notification, doesn't need notification, NZ meetings, whether it be a, a public hearing or CUP, whatever the figure is for notifications for that, as well as for city council notifications? I'd appreciate it.
Sure thing. So notification stems out of both state law and out of our adopted Unified Development Code. So first question was about the workshop. The workshop is specifically tooled in for planned developments. It is generally a conversation between the applicant and city council and Planning and Zoning Commission to get direction on a given project. That meeting is, has no notification requirements other than posting an agenda, which has a seventy-two-hour minimum requirement, a three-day minimum requirement. And as such, there's no, no notification driven by that action as it's still typically a very preliminary discussion. When we get into Planning and Zoning Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission has their hearings posted in the newspaper fifteen days prior to the meeting. And then we also send notification through that buffer that I previously discussed. That goes out a minimum of ten days prior to the meeting. For this, for this specific item, we sent mail on February eighth and ten days prior to the meeting would have been February ninth. With that, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission also runs off of the seventy-two-hour notification requirements for agendas. And all of the applicant packet, the maps that staff generates, all of that is posted online for anyone to be able to access at a minimum ten days prior to the meeting. That's also when sign notifications go out onto the site, specifically with this site and with the size of the property. I asked the developers and the development team to ensure to post on Kirby Business Center, Broadway and in front of the site, actually on the subject property. So we did, we did that additional to hope to generate additional notification for the Getting to city council and the notifications for that, city council runs off of the seventy-two-hour minimum to have posting on the agenda. But of course, through our notifications, we include the dates that council would hear these items, so that way we cover two bases.
All right. Thank you very much for that thorough explanation. Also, I've got one more for Pelican. If, if y'all are going to be the property owners, we did have a question from folks that live in South Gate about management. What, what style, how long do y'all live management companies? Is this something you're going to own and run? How, what's the process or?
Well, for property management, we'll hire, we hire a firm to manage the property, maintain it, all the maintenance, all the landscaping, all the kind of residential checks that go on will be done by a third party. And then as far as our ownership, we're looking to potentially partner on this project with CBL, so they're, they're a long-term owner of Town Center. Pelican doesn't really have a exact ownership timeline. We're, we're not trying to build it, necessarily build it and sell it, but we're also, it's kind of more market condition based.
On your previous properties, you know, kind of what average do you have that you hold properties before you would consider selling it?
It's generally like a five to ten-year timeline.
Okay. And CBL, what's, what y'all's intention as far as partnership, you know, being able to manage it, run it?
So we're in agreement that as these phases go on and with approval, we'll come to an agreement on land ownership and our investment into the project. I can't say we will go into an operating agreement with them. So along with the city holding on to a operation maintenance quality standard, CBL will as well on the day-to-day operations. So if something is an eyesore, we have our large investment that sits right in front of it and is a part of it, so we're going to be adamant on making sure those things are resolved. If it is something that's part of our ownership, we'll continue to maintain it and make sure that it doesn't become a issue.
All right. Thank you.
Real quick, and, and back on notification, one of the reasons they reached out to the HOA was at our request. So when we had our workshops with them, one of the things that we stated is, please reach out to the neighborhood next door, please set up meetings to meet with their HOA. And how that information obviously gets disseminated in the neighborhood is beyond our control, but we did want them to, to reach out and make sure that they were meeting with the neighborhood itself. And the other reason, we do have workshops with developers, but we have many workshops with a developer for something like this or any other type of development, and they simply never move forward. It's just, they have, they come in, they throw their ideas here, we talk about it, and then they never, they never move forward. So we don't necessarily do, it's not required by law to do notification requirements on that. We haven't traditionally done that, because it's really, a lot of times, I call it, you know, kicking things around the table, is this something that would work? Is something is an idea? And if there's something that they, and it's up to the developers to come back in and say, yep, we want to move forward with this, and then the normal notification process goes into place. So like I said, we've had many, in fact, we had a, an actual zone change application back in twenty-one on this exact tract of land. We denied it and, and actually, we denied it because the developers simply didn't listen to us, to be honest with you. To be honest with you, we kept telling them what we would like to have seen in their product, and they didn't do it. So it was denied. And so, and same thing there. We had asked them to reach out to the neighborhood. Whether they did or not, we're not sure. But that particular one, you know, we denied it because it wasn't what we asked them to do. With that, escape.
I, I heard maybe one or two of the neighbors say something about the four stories aspect of it, and that actually concerns me a little as well. If I, we spend a lot of time in our backyard, and I know if there was a four-story building, I'm, I'm trying to visualize the distance. I'm having a hard time with it, but apartments always have lights on. And someone mentioned that too. So I'm, I guess I'm asking you, Martin or Drake, if the four stories with the back them?
So Kimberly Horn actually has a really good graphic. And this is what I will invite Ethan to speak from.
Yes, ma'am. We're very conscientious of the view from the backyard as well. Anything that is back there, you would see whether that was trees or a commercial building, that would definitely be seen. What we've really tried to do is limit the view, limit the view from the homes and into the homes. On this exhibit, you can see that with the line of sight we were proposing, you could not see actually into the backyards. So with a four-story building, a person standing on the fourth story of the building would be standing roughly at 40 feet of height. Our architect, Meeks Partners, has created this to show what a person on that fourth story would see. That visibility only gets less as you go down. 476 feet, that is measured to the ends of the L and U-shaped buildings. Only the smallest portions of the buildings are that close to the neighborhood. Everything else is about 110 feet further back. That puts you, here the 476 feet for reference, that's about 1.3 football fields. 110 feet puts you closer to about one and a half.
500 feet from here to market. Just as a, as a reference.
Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. Got a couple here. So first off, it's, we were talking about the lighting, and I appreciate you asking, that was in my notes too. But I mentioned a lot, I live in an apartment, sold my home. And actually, I love my apartment living. I have the opposite problem. It's the people that own the homes behind my apartment that always have their lights on, always have parties, their dogs bark constantly. And it just drives me absolutely insane. Can't say anything about it, you know, but it, and it's just kind of funny where I am. The apartments are the really quiet ones. You know, the homes behind us are just, you know, I mean, they're, they're at home. So I mean, they should feel comfortable, but it's, it's just, it's always fascinating, the, the different perspectives that we have to, you know, juggle when we're making these types of decisions. But I did, one question that I wanted to, Mayor, just kind of get out real quickly because I know it was the juiciest of all the questions. I believe it was Speaker Mr. Davis, was it? I think our, our last speaker. Just real quickly, Pelican, just since you brought it up, if you wanted to address it, I know it's all public information, but have you made any contributions to any of the members of the council up here? Are you contributors to any campaigns or?
We, we are not.
Okay, there you go. So I just wanted to get that out there since that was asked. Now, one of the things, we did receive a comment that was submitted. And one of the comments was simply, please research these concerns from other areas before making a decision. So I, I did do what I could to research some of this. And so some of the comments that we've got, you know, like keep crime down, demographics up, you know, it's going to cause these issues. So I looked into whatever studies were available and looked into other communities where you would have these types of developments and near proximity to another. And so the, I guess, the most recent and complete data available for this show that multifamily in working communities and whatever proximity to single-family homes brings more of an affluent transient population. Said that the Census Bureau says that the multifamily typically follows the jobs. And so where there are jobs, there is need for multifamily. And so there is, when looking at, I guess, broader meta-analyses, there is an increase in the overall values. In particular, with multifamily bringing so much on-the-ground value, it actually takes some of the pressure off of the, the single-family homeowner as far as the amount of taxes that they are required to pay, ad valorem taxes. In addition to that, there was additional data avail, available that said that 100 single-family homes in the United States yields an average of 51 school-aged children, whereas 100-unit multifamily dwelling yields 31 school-aged children on average. So the surveys found that multifamily is more attractive to single people, couples without children, empty nesters. And I believe Bob back there had made, mentioned to kind of maybe some of the forgotten individuals in the community, some of our elderly, our veterans, individuals who typically wouldn't be able to afford the average-priced home in the community. So I think there, there is definitely a need. So to approach it from, you know, a need-based argument, I think there is the need for this as well. And then looking also at the enrollment in schools, this is according to National Center on Education Statistics. I'm shocked I got statistics out. I was, thought I was going to struggle with that. Yeah, I know. It says, it is expected nationwide that enrollment in schools from 2020 to 2029 will increase 51.5 million. But that does not correspond in any way with multifamily unit count. In addition to that, there were crime analyses done. And when analyzed on a per-unit basis, shows that there is no statistical difference, there we go again, between multifamily and single-family crime, but rather on an, an address-based approach. It, it seems as though there is because the calls are coming to the same address. But it would, you have to look at it from unit-based approaches where you could have crime in a neighborhood, but you're looking at it as far as the number of addresses. And that's kind of when you break down that analysis, there is no difference. They are relatively very similar. Now, going back to another two, we had two speakers mention that people live in apartments 24/7. I think that's absolutely true. And I think that's a point, again, going back to the comments that Mr. Lewis made, that, yeah, these are people who are living here. These are people who are looking for a place to live. And, and yes, they aren't here tonight because they don't live here yet. And I think that's the point, is that there, there are people who want to live in our community. But, you know, their homes don't exist yet. I, I, I can't see them being here, right? Like, I, I wouldn't show up to advocate for where I live now, but the fact that it exists. I love my community. A bunch of our neighbor, very close-knit community as well. We look out for each other. We have very active property management that emails us constantly, texts us constantly. We have neighborhood events, parties at the pool. We have food trucks come out. It's a really lively, very, you know, well-connected community. Moving down the list, one thing I wanted to ask on the, the Town Center side of things, let me see. I wanted to see if Matt, did you want to respond? So we had a speaker Ames mention that people passing, she's a Realtor in the neighborhood and that people are passing over Pearland particularly because Pearland Town Center really isn't very good quality. And I would actually like for you to speak as to why you're even considering this multifamily development for the Town Center. How is this potentially going to help the Town Center?
Thank you. So one of the reasons we are looking to partner with Pelican specifically is it is a higher-quality product. Retail because of COVID is a extremely turmoil, up-and-down market. One of the biggest questions, why the Pearland market and demographics show phenomenal on paper? A lot of retailers, when we speak with them, densification is a big piece for them. They want a small group. Because right now, I believe it was mentioned, Pearland's 70 square miles. It's pretty far to get from the east side to the west side of Pearland. It takes a good, good amount of time. So a lot of retailers are wanting a more core focus, and that goes as well as restaurants. Since we've already been starting this project, our upgrade of retailers is coming. We've already signed releases with more prominent retail brands. And we're in negotiations with 10 others that are going to upgrade the entire quality of the Town Center.
Okay, good. Yeah, I, I think that that's a really good point that I think is maybe missing from some of the conversations I've had. If, if there are any other, you know, I, I, I was looking for whatever statistics I could find. I mean, there are a lot of comments, I guess, on a lot of the same issues that were brought forward. But I know we addressed some of them earlier. I'm just not necessarily seeing with this type of development versus the garden style. And maybe our developers want to talk to this. It seems like, I think, some of the more traditional knee-jerk mindset comments on multifamily are geared more towards the garden style. With these higher-end products, I know we mentioned lifespan earlier. Do you, do you typically see that these types of developments are kept up a little bit longer? Or are they kind of held to the same curse that the garden-style developments are?
I, I think that it's a, it's twofold. Part of what Ethan mentioned earlier, kind of everything being internal to the property, you're not seeing as much of the traffic. You're not seeing all the, all the services are internal to the property, whether it be trash or trash is, it's all internal. The values of these, these, this type of construction is, is higher on a, on a per-unit basis. So generally, you're going to have more, your rents are going to be, your rents could be slightly higher on a per-square-foot basis. So you might have more, more dollars to spend to maintain the property. I mean, this is, this type of development is not something that, even if Pelican wasn't involved, you know, and if it's five or 10 years, whatever the timeline is, you're going to have someone coming in and spending, you know, let's just say $80 million to buy a project. They're not going to, it's not something that you're just going to let diminish and fall apart. They're, they're, they, they have investment standards as well. So this is just a, it's a very nice project. It's not, there's, there is a movement around Houston and other places where they are building, whether it be tax credit or more of a, they kind of would classify it as a workforce housing project where the goal is to just build it as cheaply as you possibly can. Pinch every penny, whether it be the materials of the project or how it's maintained.
I'm assuming they're not amenitizing extra, you know, features for the public use in those types of developments.
Right. And so this is, this is top the market as far as nice multifamily, what you would see in, in the city of Pearland or around the entire Houston area.
To, to the point that the mayor made earlier, where we had a speaker say that it seems as though Pearland just approves and approves and approves without thought. I mean, there are approvals that happen that are by right. And so we are held to state law as well, where we have to provide opportunities for certain developments to, to just manifest. If, if there's zoning in place that allows it, it, it goes forward. And I think if we try to stand too firmly in the way, I mean, we can open the city up to liability.
Hotels would be an example.
Yeah. So, and, but the mayor made the point earlier that we have already denied one development where we did have the authority to do so because the standard they brought forward simply was not good. We gave them feedback, very frank, direct feedback. They did not come back with anything different. So it, it was clear. And I think, you know, this is based off of some of the comments in those meetings. And, you know, what, what's been brought back, I think, is more in line with the conversations that have been had since then. And it seems like you've addressed a lot of the issues, the concerns that we had with the visibility. I know with the lighting standards, we've talked a lot about already. And then another comment that was made earlier, and I'm running out of comments here. It's good, I'll shut up soon, is that it's, the way it's currently zoned and kind of what the initial intended use was, was to have some type of an entertainment, you know, facility or something there that was used to attract people there and have events and all sorts of stuff that I think would be a far greater detriment to the, the neighborhood beside it. So if we don't rezone this, and that does come, you know, we don't have a whole lot of say on, on stopping something like that. At least with this, we do have the opportunity to go through the, the process of talking through this. And I, and I think that most of the concerns that I would have had as far as trying to do our best to protect the neighbors behind and make sure that their privacy is still intact, to whatever degree we can assure that, to try to make, you know, the best possible product for them so that the people who are actually living there, again, I'll go back to that comment, the affluent transient populations. We have a lot of, you know, high-tech employers here in Pearland that are bringing people that are, you know, one of my neighbors in my apartment works at Dow Chemical, is a PhD from A&amp;M. And I mean, I'm sure he like makes a lot more money than I do, but, but he lives in an apartment. You know, it's a transient position for him, just like there are many scientists who come through our community who may not necessarily be here for 20 years. But they're here for three years, you know, and they're looking for something kind of temporary. And, and we've had the, this, people come to these chambers that have said other comments about those same individuals who might come into the community who have gone into, let's say, Shadow Creek, bought up the homes, moved back to Washington or California or wherever it is. They hold on to the home, and now it's, it's a rental situation because they come in, they buy up all the homes. And now, you know, you've got so many, and I've heard that from Realtors, saying we, you know, Shadow Creek has turned into a rental community because all the people came in, they bought all the homes because they were so cheap, you know? And now they're gone and they're renting them out. So I think here, we're able to exercise a little bit more control, having, you know, a property that has one manager that can control the look, the feel, the ongoing maintenance, to me, is a, a better situation and with their all-yield. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Chad? So a couple of questions, and I think you may have already answered one. So this is not a HUD or a tax credit deal?
No, sir. No, sir. Those projects require special approval through the state and federal government. This is entirely market rate.
Okay, thank you for that. The, the second question is for staff. And then on the, the TIA, the TIA is based just on the apartment? Or is it the whole CBL property? How, how will that work?
The TIA will be based on the whole CBL property. That's, because otherwise, we won't be able to know the exact impact to the intersection. So the intersection will have the impact from this development as well as the CBL because there are other existing apartments too and businesses too.
Okay, and so what you presented to us was kind of a guess that we may get some lights here or there. But, I mean, if we're, if we're, if the TIA goes farther and, and it's based on the whole property, I mean, are you guys are committed to turn lanes and anything that's going to be required if it comes to that?
That's correct. We will do anything that's required.
Okay. All right. I, I mean, I have a little heartburn on this. In the 2005 PD, I, I wasn't part of council there, but I'm going to say when it was probably presented, the entertainment side of that was probably helped sell the PD. And, and I, I like it being the entertainment. However, you know, a loud neighbor which causes a lot of traffic is also something for you guys to think about. The only, the only thing is, I, I know Planning and Zoning gave this a lot of thought. I know they really looked into it. And I, and I know those guys are some smart individuals. And I, I, I trust their decision on that. And that's, that's my only comment.
Anybody else before we go to the second round? Just a second. Thank you, Mayor. I do think if this moves forward, we do need to add the dark sky standard. Sounds like the applicant and staff are on board with that. And this is a culmination of what, four or five meetings? I think at the last one, my parting comment was make sure you check with the HOA next door because if they fill the chambers, the tide's turned on yet. And I think that's, that's where we're at. I think P and Z did put a lot of work and got it, you know, came to a thoughtful answer at the end of the day. We've got, we've got residents here that are voicing their concerns. I, I guess, what type of feedback did you get on the two meetings that you hosted with the residents?
We've heard a lot of the same concerns we heard this evening. Concerned about height, physical, concerns about the physical environment. I would say height, view, lighting was a new one this evening. We've talked about environmental impact on the pond and the wildlife there. Of course, traffic, schools, parks. of course, traffic, schools, parks, all of some of the same things we mentioned this evening. We've also talked a lot about community character, crime, let me speak to the physical constraints for a moment, the design we're proposing incorporates a lot of things that we just know mitigate that impact, we're happy to consider additional design standards if there are any to be suggested. But then, the other constraints have really been about community character in some place, crime, look and feel of the neighborhood, traffic, that sort of a thing, we've received a lot of those.
All right, thank you.
All right, second round. Mr. Cade?
I just want to ask one thing, on the picture you had of the four-story view, it was, are there any two-story houses along that, along that, with this view, you can still see in a window, if there's two-story houses, it's going to be, yeah, okay.
Yes, ma'am, there are two-story homes. I will say, the PUD today permits a height of at least 68 feet for residential, we're only coming in at 48.
Do you have another?
Thank you, Mayor. What is your investment cost to build this project? Approximately?
Yeah, I'd say approximately $60 million.
And do you have an idea of the rent roll or the range?
The range of rents would vary between approximately $1,300 to $2,200.
Thank you.
So, just one final comment in this picture that's up now, number 10, I know your landscape plan, you're showing trees along the sides and the back of the complex, if you look at this picture, it looks like there may be some gaps. Personally, you would like to see some of that filled in, it's just a comment, there's the landscape plan, and if you look at the bottom, you can see some gaps in there, and you guys aren't really looking at adding some trees in there. I think trees help with some of the screening and would help address some of the neighbors' comments.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
Yes, sir, we've talked about that internally, and we're happy to work with the neighborhood to help provide that extra screening.
Last call for questions, comments? Seeing none, all right. We're going to move to new business item number two. Ms. Chavere, I'm going to ask you to put that on the table, there was a discussion about dark skies, about dark skies lighting, and Mr. Tuman just asked about additional tree landscaping along the southern border, southern property line there to do, provide additional screening. I would suggest those would be amendments, put those on the table with an amendment.
Mayor, point order, can I ask a question real quickly of staff? Just, this is a first of two, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so when we put these on, if there were questions, so a lot of the questions that were asked here tonight, Mayor, even some of the ones where there may have been challenges back and forth, we will have an opportunity between now and the next meeting to get those responses back. So if there are things that you would like to challenge and provide additional information for anything that you might have heard up here where you may disagree, you do have an opportunity between now and the next meeting, there will be a second reading, so this is not finalized until we get to the second reading.
Correct.
So I just want to make that point of order, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, good question, but I just want to make sure, those were the two things that I heard with, as far as additional, if the council wanted to move forward with it. So, Ms. Chavere, if you would present that, please.
Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number 2000M-255, so moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second, do we have an amending motion?
I'll make a motion. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to add the dark sky ordinance and the additional screening on the southern side if this was to approve, to have those two things added.
Is that enough on the additional trees?
And, yeah, just to clarify, the additional screening was with trees, and that they said that they would work with the neighborhood and, of course, city staff to accomplish that.
That's correct. Yes.
That's a motion?
That's an amendment.
Second.
We have a motion to amend and a second, so the first, Madam Secretary, we're going to vote on the motion to amend first, so with that, we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Protimcoza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Chavaria?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Tuman?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
Okay, so we have an amended motion on the table, with that, any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Chavaria?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Oh.
Member Tuman?
Aye.
Mayor Protimcoza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
No.
The motion passes four to two.
All right, with that, we will move to the consent agenda, Mr. Coza, I don't believe we had any items to be removed, so if you would present consent agenda items A through C.
Yes, Mayor, consideration and possible action of consent agenda items A through C, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, with that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Protimcoza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Chavaria?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Tuman?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right, with that, we'll move to X, matters removed from consent agenda, there were none, other business, there were none, mayor, council, issues for city council discussion, there were none, with that, we'll move to adjournment at 8:21.